All right, we'll call this Richfield Planning Commission Meeting of February 26 to order. Our first item is approval of the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting on November 27.
So moved. Second?
Any discussion? There was an item that I had mentioned to staff before, and I don't know if that was changed. Where Commissioner Reese Daniels is, yeah. On our item number five, we've got Commissioner Reese Daniels moved to close the public hearing, but she was not on the commission at this time. Do we know who that was?
Yes, and I have made the change in the, I made the change in the minutes document. It was too late to change it in your packet. So maybe as part of the motion, you want to just make that note?
Yeah, so does-
Because she wasn't here.
Yeah. So do you want to say with that correction?
Yes, I'll move, I'll move approval with the correction of item number five. And we don't know who seconded it?
Commissioner Rosenberg, it was you.
Oh, it was me. Well, okay. So you have a better memory than I do. Okay. With me, Susan Rosenberg as the seconder for that item.
And I'm sorry, who seconded the original motion? Was that, would you, do you accept that change? Okay, so any other discussion on this item? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that carries. So our first item is presentation of commissioner survey materials from the Human Rights Commission.
Rights Commission. I'm going to start by approaching the bench, and I'll just pass. So why I'm here before you is the Human Rights Commission is charged with performing outreach activities related to recruitment for boards and commissions. And our goal is to, we've been charged by the city council, and we've taken it upon ourselves to try to increase the, try to increase the diversity of our commissions. And so to do that, we do several recruiting efforts. We've started on social media. We go, like, we reach out to community partners and try to include them. And the goal is to, like I said, increase the number of people that we have across all different racial, ethnic, and income groups in Richfield. And we want to make sure that we have broad representation of our community. And so as a way to measure whether our recruitment efforts are succeeding or not, every year we distribute this survey to commissioners and ask them to fill it out. We've done it for the past few years. But typically, we've had very low rates of response to the survey. Like, last year, we had roughly 50% response. And there was a lot of concern and feedback that we heard back that people were just sort of dropped this survey in their laps. They didn't understand what it was for, or why they should fill it out. They're very concerned about things like whether their information would be protected, was this information going to be public, that sort of stuff. And so I just wanted to assure you, or give you some background on it, that, so the basis why we collected, I've already explained. The questions on it, we've tried to reflect sort of basic, everyday questions that you might see in the census, or questions that are based off of law, and, and ask, sort of categorize according to sort of standard questions that are already asked in public surveys. And so what we do after we hand out these surveys is we ask that you fill them out. If you could fill them out right now, I would really appreciate it. You're not required to return it back to me, but like I said, our, our effort is to try to increase the rates of response so that we have the most accurate picture possible, so that we can know whether our efforts are succeeding. And then I just wanted to be here, be present, so that if you have any questions about the survey, I could answer them on the fly for you, and, and hopefully settle any concerns or doubts that you have. So if you have any questions, I, I welcome, welcome them.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Sunderland?
Okay, I'll walk around and collect surveys from anybody who's ready. If you, I'll be here for the next, probably just for the next 15, 20 minutes, in case you want to approach me separately or something.
And I assume if people are uncomfortable with a specific question, they could just leave that question blank and fill out the rest?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I notice that there are some non-responses, and like I said, that's perfectly okay. But if you have concerns, if you have feedback, our goal is to increase response every year. So you can email me directly. My email address is b.sunderland@gmail.com. And, and I'd be happy to take your feedback back to the Human Rights Commission, and we'll try to improve our survey in the future and improve our outreach efforts. So thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, so this is an opportunity for citizens to address the commission for items that are not on the agenda. If anybody would like to address any, anything not on the agenda? Okay. So our next item is approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
I'll move approval.
A second?
Okay, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So our first item is a public hearing to consider a request for a variance to odor control regulations for a takeout restaurant at 7733 Portland Avenue. Staff?
Chair Haford O'Leary, members of the Planning Commission. In 2017, Winter Gas Station remodeled and reopened the gas station and convenience store at 7733 Portland Avenue. The business owner now plans to add a takeout-only deli restaurant inside the convenience store. The addition of cooking equipment will require a type-one ventilation hood, which triggers the, which triggers the requirement to mitigate cooking odors when adjacent to residential property. Richfield Villa Center at 7727 Portland Avenue, adjacent to the north, is a senior living facility and nursing home, and is considered to be residential property. Winter Gas Station is requesting a variance to allow the deli addition without the requirement, without the requirement to add odor mitigation equipment. There are unique circumstances related to this site and this use that warrant granting a variance from odor control requirements. A takeout-only restaurant inside a convenience store is, is likely to operate cooking equipment at a lower intensity than a full-service or fast-food restaurant. The proposed ventilation hood is, is to be situated at the south end of the building, so as far away as possible from the adjacent residential property. And the location of that hood would allow the cooking exhaust to be directed to the south towards the highway, and basically away from, from any other property. That exhaust fan located at the south end of the building, it would be approximately 78 feet from the shared property line to the north, and then approximately 113 feet from the residential building. Those numbers are relevant only because in the, in the ordinance, the odor control ordinance states abutting or within 150 feet. So those numbers there are provided just to show kind of how close it is or isn't from, from meeting that requirement. Richfield Villa Center has provided a letter of support for the variance request, and you can find that attached to this, to this report. Finding that the proposal meets all requirements necessary to issue a variance, staff is recommending approval. That's all I have for you. I believe the owner of the store is present as well, if you have any questions for them.
Would the applicant like to come forward and say anything about the project? Yeah, if you could go over to the microphone, please. Thank you.
I've been working with Eddie Elias for several years now on, on several projects that he has done, where he has taken properties and spent quite a bit of money in improving them, and improving, you know, the looks of the neighborhood. The last time I was in front of you was to apply for the variance for the fireside. That went through, and to this day, I don't know if we've had any complaints. I haven't heard any. A scrubber and a type-one hood system is legitimate to clean up the air a little bit and preserve the smells of the neighborhood. However, that's for a restaurant situation. This is a gas station. He's trying to put a to-go, take-out, to-go food in, some hot food. Given our extreme climates, some of the hot dog rollers just aren't making it these days. And to put a scrubber on a type-one hood system would take the cost from about $25,000 to about $55,000. Given the money he's already spent on this station, and, and the money he's put into it to improve the neighborhood, it just seems like a bit of an unreasonable request. The hood is on the south end of the building. The prevailing winds are from the northwest, and behind the hood is the highway ring. So, you know, and, and the closest adjacent facility is supporting this, so they have some hot food close by, obviously, but they don't seem to have a problem. I just want to explain the, the budget situation. It's going to take a $50,000 project that he's already spent, he's already working on that, and turn it into about an $80,000 project. That's all.
Do we have any questions for the applicant or for staff at this time?
I just have a question of what kind of food is going to be served?
Hot sandwiches, Philly steak sandwiches. He's not going to be doing 73 hamburger. He, he likes quality product. He's got a couple of other places, a place downtown and over on Industrial Boulevard, and quality is, is the norm, not, not just a greasy spoon.
Mr. Penn?
Yeah, I was just curious. Are there, are there deep fryers involved, or is it just like a grill situation?
There's one, there's one deep fryer, yes. But, you know, it's, it's one, and they don't cook anything until the people come up. They're going to make some breakfast sandwiches in the morning, then wrap them, and then shut things down. And then at lunchtime, there'll be a little, you know, it's, as people come up, they cook to order. And there will be a heat sensor in the hood system per mechanical code that will automatically turn it on. There's an upblast fan that carries the odors up and shoots them up above the roof about 20, 30 feet, and prevailing winds take them from the northwest to southeast.
Great, thank you.
Commissioner Haford O'Leary, if you don't mind, I would like, since we have a mechanical and air expert here, Mr. Bartel, if you would be so kind, could you explain for the commission the difference between a type-one hood and a type-two hood? This is the second such request for an odor control variance that's come before the commission in the last couple of years. And I just thought, since we have someone here who is, is really familiar with those terms and that equipment, it might be beneficial, just in a general sense, to kind of explain the difference.
A type-one hood is a hood that's used to ventilate cooking equipment that goes above 400 degrees and/or generates a significant amount of grease, be it from meat and cheese. Type-two hoods are for steam, removing chemical odors, heat, this type of thing. Type-one hoods have a baffled filter system inside the hood that removes most of the grease. It drains down to a trough and goes into a grease cup that can be put in the dishwasher. The air goes up into a duct system that's wrapped with 3M Fire Master, three inches of it, that'll hold a fire for two hours. The ductwork is 16-gauge. It's welded, airtight, watertight. And then that goes up to a high-temp upblast ventilator, they call them PRBs, power roof ventilators, that takes the air and shoots it up above the roofline, so it doesn't gather on the roofline and create a grease problem. And then the air is, you know, usually mixed up with the existing air and blown away. That air is replaced by a make-up air system that makes up, up to 80% of the air that that exhaust hood takes out of the building. And henceforth, you have a type-one make, exhaust and make-up air system. They get cleaned by professional steam cleaners. The only way you can clean this system is with the fire suppression chemical and/or hot steam. And I suggest that, you know, people clean their hood systems at least two or three times a year, and that's done at night by professionals that come in. They have to pull a permit with the city. It gets inspected, and then they carry on their business.
Thank you. Any other questions? Yeah?
Sir, for the record, could you state your name and make sure you sign in?
I'm John Bartel. My company's Commercial Air Designs Incorporated. We did several jobs in Richfield.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so if you could just sign in on the sign-out sheet that should be there. And then with that, we'll open the public hearing. So if anybody else from the public would like to make a comment on this variance request, they could come up and do so now. And do we have a motion to close the public?
Yep.
Extra traffic. But it never, you know, it doesn't reference the main thing for the variance, which is odor control. Are they, are they okay with the variance on odor control, too? Because this just says we're okay with extra traffic. Just wondering if they're aware.
Chair Haford O'Leary, Commissioner Quam, thank you for asking that. That actually, when, when staff received the letter, we had the same thought that, that they didn't address what the actual request was. So I, I called up, I don't have the name off the top of my head of the person who wrote the letter. Joanne, not going to try to pronounce her last name, my apologies. I, I called her up, and we had a, we had a discussion about the request, and I explained to her in detail what they were asking for, that they were proposing to, to add the cooking equipment without the odor control. And she did not express any additional concerns, and offered, offered to write a revised letter, but I told her that wasn't, that probably wasn't necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
So do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, and just to be clear, this is only a motion to close the public hearing. It does not mean we are approving the variance. So all in favor of closing the public hearing?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. So now if anybody has a motion related to this variance, they could make that now.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the variance.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
So any discussion of this variance? Any concerns or ideas about it? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? All right, the motion carries. So our next item is considering a request for another variance from the city's shoreline management ordinance for the Lyndale Gardens development. Staff?
As I go through this staff report, it may be useful for the, for commissioners to pull up pages 21 through 20, approximately through 23. Page 21 is an aerial image of the site, which shows kind of the property lines, and how they relate to the, the site as it looks today, showing Richfield Lake and the stormwater ponds that surround it. Page 23 is a, the site plan, and we'll get through what, there's a few different colored lines on page 23 on that site plan. And we'll, as I go through the report, I'll explain what all of those different lines refer to. The Cornerstone Group has owned the Lyndale Gardens Center property since 2011. Land use approvals granted by the city council back in 2013 resulted in the construction of Lake Winds Food Co-op, as well as the shoreline improvements and public amenities along Richfield Lake. The northern portion of the site, intended for multifamily housing development, has remained undeveloped, and all prior land use approvals have since expired. While the Cornerstone Group continues to finalize a housing development proposal for the site, they are seeking some clarity from the city regarding building setback requirements from Richfield Lake. The city recently adopted a shoreline management ordinance that requires a 75-foot setback for all structures as measured from the ordinary high water level, as established by the Minnesota DNR. The DNR's water level management of Richfield Lake includes, includes the various stormwater management ponds that surround the lake. The Cornerstone Group is requesting a variance to use the high-water level measurement of Richfield Lake that was originally identified by the city prior to the construction of the stormwater management ponds, in place of that larger setback that is established by the ordinance. Observing the larger setback would result in approximately a 22% reduction in buildable area on the site. The applicant has stated that this reduction in buildable area would restrict their ability to develop the site, to the point of it being financially infeasible. Any buildings on the site would have to be pushed even further back from the stormwater management ponds, reducing the width of the site, restricting drive aisles and parking areas to the point where fire department access may not be possible. So the attached site plan drawings that I was referring to, they show the locations of the, in blue, you'll see the ordinary high-water line, the 75-foot setback line in green, and then the requested setback line shown in red. And then that shaded area, kind of in a teal or turquoise color, shows basically the reduction in buildable area on the site if, if, if the, if the variance request were not granted. The, the requested setback line is based on city records of, of Richfield Lake's ordinary high-water line, or ordinary high-water level, excluding the stormwater management ponds along the shoreline. The applicant worked closely with the city's Public Works Department to establish this proposed setback line, and engineering staff support the variance request. It is important to note that this variance request does not include the construction of any specific structures on the site. This is simply for providing clarity as to what the setback requirement is. Separate applications would have to be submitted, and additional, an additional public hearing before the Planning Commission would take place before approval of any structures, any development on the site. So through, as we made our way through the report, I kind of covered the, the various variance criteria. If you want me to go over any of those criteria in detail, I'd be happy to do so. But finding that the proposal meets all of the, the requirements necessary to issue a variance, staff is recommending approval. City engineer Jeff Pearson is here to answer any questions about the shoreline ordinance itself, or any of the technical aspects of that. And then representatives from Cornerstone are here as well, if you have any questions for them. Thank you.
Do we have any questions for staff before we bring the applicant up? I just have a couple of questions. One is just procedurally, usually when we get a variance application, we have a specific proposal in front of us, and we're acting on the variances that are necessary for that. But in this, it's more of a theoretical variance for a yet-to-come proposal. So why the change in order for this particular project?
The reason there's not a, I think what you're saying is that there's not a number in the staff report. That is, the setback requirement is normally 75 feet, and you're, you're saying why there's not a specific-
I guess I'm wondering, why are we granting a variance for a development that we don't have a proposal for?
Commissioner Haford O'Leary, let me try and field that one for you. So in this case, the applicant is trying to move forward with this plan, and this setback line was, when, when it was presented to the DNR, or when the DNR came back and said what this new setback line is, that's significantly different than the assumptions that we were working under before. This has taken a lot of effort on staff's time and the Cornerstone Group, a lot of time from staff and the Cornerstone Group, to figure out how we could manage this issue. It was also staff's understanding that we would use this original line. So before the applicant moves forward and spends a significant amount of money, additional money, developing architectural and site plans, they want to be sure that the city is okay with this original setback line.
Okay, thank you. And then my, my other question is, given that the other, the previous approvals expired within a year, is this variance also only valid for a year, and the, the main proposal would have to come within that year for this to be useful to them?
This, as we wrote the, the resolution, included an automat, as you know, extension, the council can issue a one-year extension if requested. In this case, we just built that in right from the beginning. So that this, the resolution actually states that these approvals would be valid for two years to allow the applicant to have that, that time to get their development plans together.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for staff?
Yeah, I guess I, excuse me, I just, I guess I had a couple of questions for the engineer, and I guess the, the basic process on how this went through was, you know, so this, this theoretical building footprint that's on the plan, what's, what's behind that to the north? Is that supposed to be reserved for parking, or is that just open space? Is there a reason why it has to be loaded so close, the building structure has to be loaded so close to the setback and the property line?
Yeah, I think in terms of the development and the layout of that, at least preliminarily, I'll either let Matt or the developer speak on that.
So I think, I'll, I will let the Cornerstone Group elaborate a little in further detail. But initially, the, in earlier versions of these townhomes, there were, there were even more units. These two buildings shown, these two footprints shown on here were even closer to the lake, and then there was room for a third building behind them. Is that correct?
That is correct. Let's, I, I would suggest letting the developer answer this question.
Yeah, so with that, let's, let's hear from Cornerstone Group. Thank you. Must be painful for us to be speculating on what you have in mind.
Good evening, members of the Planning Commission. My name is Colleen Carey. I'm the president of the Cornerstone Group. And I'm happy to answer questions. I think I can also give you a little bit of an update on where we are with the project. So, but to confirm what they just told you, we, the reason we're here tonight for this variance is so that we can continue with some fairly extensive and expensive architectural work that needs to happen, and will start tomorrow, so that we're back in front of you in about two months with our, with our full set of plans. So we are intending to move forward, but there's no sense in drawing all of that, not knowing where the setback line. So we originally had a plan that had more units on it, but because of a couple of things, including this setback line. So there were, so I would say there were reasonable people with varying opinions about where the setback line could be. And originally, we thought that this one was too restrictive, and we were hoping for something less restrictive. And it turned out then that it got worse before it got better. And so this is kind of the middle-of-the-road line that allows us to have some reasonable amount of density on this site. Originally, we were going to try to do 156 units on this site. So this is, is, now, this, this particular piece is only 30 units, and it's not the whole site. There's another parcel that is currently under a purchase agreement that will be also coming through the Planning Commission in the next few months, and that will be another 70-some units. So we've really had to cut back the density quite a bit because of this setback line. And on the other end, on the north side of the site, we need fire truck access. So those are the things that are sort of squeezing into this particular site. The other piece is, that might show on the drawing you have, I don't know. There's a big easement right through the middle of our site, so that one significant chunk can only be parking over the stormwater easement that comes down. So does that answer? Do you need more? Okay.
Any other questions for the applicant, will we? So I'm just curious of what, what is yet to come, although it isn't relevant necessarily in today's decision. The, the building on the north side of the site is, is gone, and it's just, these are the only buildings you're likely to bring, come back with?
Yes, we're likely to be proposing 30 units in two buildings. There'll be two three-story buildings with underground parking, and for-sale condo-type units that will be designed, we call them through units. So you can see out front and out the back, there's not a double-loaded corridor, and they will be priced from 400 to 600 some thousand. And will range from, the small unit is going to be about 1400 square feet, two-bedroom, and then the larger one will be kind of a penthouse, you know, top floor. There'll be stacks, six stacks, and each stack will have an elevator. So that's a little bit unusual, no long hallways. You take the elevator up, take the elevator up to your third-floor unit, you just walk right out into your unit. On the first floor and the second floor, there would just be two units at each elevator lane. And great views of the lake, and really nice product, less dense than we had originally planned, partly because we have bad soils, in case you hadn't heard. We had to go get environmental cleanup grants, but the soil isn't so great there, and the water table is high, and the, the DNR setback line is encroaching on our site, and the fire trucks need to get all the way through and out the back door. So the, that, all of that has led us to this newer plan, which we hope to be due in a few months, and ideally, we would be in structural.
Any other questions for the applicant?
Colleen, just as I'm looking at this map, so it's going to be the two buildings, and there's going to be how many, how many units in each one, then? Is it going to-
So there are, there's a total of 20 units, and there'll be, I mean, 30 units. There'll be 20 in one building and 10 in the other.
Okay, and so there are several sto, a couple stories each?
Three stories.
Three sto, oh, they're-
Three stories on top of underground park.
Okay, okay. And the, the price is going to be, they're going to be owner-occupied, then?
Yes, owner-occupied, 400 to 600.
Okay, so not affordable housing.
No.
Okay. But with the view and everything.
Yeah, and a product that I think Richfield feels that it hasn't had created here, like.
No, you're right on that, yeah. Interesting, interesting.
We had a neighborhood meeting, uh, a few weeks ago, had fifty people come, uh, mostly just to inform people of what we were up to. So that was a great conversation. No, no big issues came up. People liked this lower density and liked that it's for sale. Uh, we did, in fact, sign a couple of reservation agreements, which are non-binding. That's not the, the actual purchase agreement, but people who wanted their name on the list to be, to put down a deposit. So we're hoping that there's going to be, uh, some good strong plan. And if you saw the newspaper over the weekend, you know, hot in Richfield.
I look forward to the open house. See them.
Yeah. Any other questions?
Um, no, I think that would be all. So we can open the public hearing unless there's anything else you'd like to add?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so this is a public hearing for any other members of the public who would like to comment on this variance. All right, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Um, any discussion of closing the public hearing? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, that carries. So do we have a motion regarding the variance?
Well, I will move to approve this request for a variance for the city's shoreline management ordinance for the Lindale development. A second.
Okay. Um, any discussion of this variance? All right. Uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, opposed? All right, uh, motion carries. So our next item is election of planning commission chairperson, or, yeah, chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary, uh, staff.
The bylaws require that the planning commission hold an annual organizational meeting at the first regular meeting in February and elect from its membership a chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary. According to the bylaws, a majority vote is necessary to first elect a chairperson and then the remaining officers. Uh, the, the chairperson, vice-chairperson, and secretary are to take office immediately upon election and they hold their offices until their successors are elected next year. The chairperson is responsible for conducting all planning commission meetings and public hearings. Chairperson is also responsible for representing the commission in dealing with the city council and staff. The vice-chairperson fulfills those responsibilities, uh, in the event the chairperson is absent. And the secretary assumes those responsibilities when both are absent, uh, and also signs all meetings and official commission documents. With that, uh, we'll leave it to the commission to conduct elections. We don't do a, a secret ballot or anything like that. It usually just goes by, uh, opening the floor for nominations, beginning with chair.
Well, I will nominate Sean O'Leary for, uh, chair.
And I'll second.
Okay, any discussion?
You're doing a great job so far.
One and a half meetings down. Um, all right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? So motion carries. So next, uh, do we have a motion for a vice-chairperson?
Mr. Chair?
Yep.
I'd like to nominate Allison Holberg as vice-chair.
And I'll second.
Um, so any discussion on that? So I very much support Allison. I guess I am wondering about our intention last fall when we selected Brian Panda as vice-chair. Are you both, are you interested in, in serving the role?
I, I would be, but I don't know if.
No? Well, we have the nomination, so if you're willing to accept?
Okay.
Okay, all right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, so motion carries. So Allison is vice-chairperson. So and next we need a nomination for secretary. Or volunteers.
Excuse me, a secretary, mostly, just the signing.
It is largely signing the minutes.
And then you're the third in line.
I, and you are third in the line of succession. I don't know if a planning commission secretary has ever chaired a meeting.
Planning commission secretaries have chaired meetings.
Well, there you go. Your time in the spotlight could come.
Um, I guess I'm interested.
Somebody like to nominate?
Mr. Chair, I'd nominate Mr. Penn.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay, so staff can, you're owed a credit for that. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you both for your willingness. Um, and I don't think there's anything else to do on that item, so I believe we can move on to, uh, planning commission liaisons, staff.
So we just need to make appointments to, uh, of liaisons, um, for, for the community services advisory commission, the city council, HRA, school board, and transportation committee. If you'd like me to, to read through in the staff report when those, um, when those bodies meet, I can do so. Otherwise, I think you, you have it in front of you and we can, we can start with, uh.
I did just want to add for the benefit of our new commissioners, what this means. Um, so this means that you would be reporting on the activities of another commission or board to the planning commission. Um, while you're absolutely welcome to attend the meetings, some meetings are, uh, depending on the board, available on, uh, by broadcast or on our YouTube channel. Otherwise, um, you can always contact a member of those boards or read through the agendas and minutes. So just, so you're aware of what this responsibility entails.
I do know on certain commissions, at least transportation, which I've done in the past, they do ask the opposite to happen, that you represent the planning commission and say what's going on to them. So I don't know that everybody does that, but that is a possibility on some of them.
Could you repeat that, Sean? They do ask what?
So depending on the commission, they may, may or may not have time during their meetings for liaisons from other commissions to give a report. So if it's possible and you're interested in going, it can be advantageous to actually be there. Um, and for this, do we need to do individual motions for each or can we just kind of do a sign-up list here? Okay. Uh, community services advisory.
You actually don't have to, um, you don't have to make motions or anything on, on, these items don't have to be moved. I think you just agree amongst yourselves who, uh, who is going to be liaisons to which boards.
I think let's just go through the list then and we'll say, people shout out, um, what they want to do. Community Services Advisory Commission. Anybody champing at the bit for that?
And that, that spot was filled by, uh, former commissioner or former chair, uh, Reese Daniels last year. So we do not have an incumbent.
Yeah. Yeah. Commissioner Penn would like to do that? All right. Uh, city council.
Yeah, I'd like to continue with that.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Rosenberg, um, Housing and Redevelopment Authority.
I would be interested in either the HRA or the school board, if somebody has a preference, either one. Okay.
So one of you guys should pick one. Okay. So Commissioner Crom, would you be okay with school board?
Sure.
Okay.
As long as I don't have to attend every single school, wouldn't it?
No.
Okay.
Um, okay, so Housing and Redevelopment and School Board, Transportation Commission. Um, I would like to continue with that, if that works for people. Okay. Um, and we do not have any?
Chamber, somebody.
Oh, we don't, we don't have a chamber listed anymore. Would somebody like to be liaison to chamber? Cause our previous representative is no longer on the commission.
Out there?
Or do we not?
Yeah, so, so the, the Chamber of Commerce position is not an official liaison, but we've always, uh, we've always encouraged and welcomed, uh, those reports. For those, uh, for the new commissioners, former commissioner Vizecki, um, always served as kind of our, as our liaison to the Chamber of Commerce. And it was always nice to hear what was, uh, what was going on there. So if anyone, um, is willing to stay tuned to what's the happenings with the Chamber of Commerce, we would certainly, uh, welcome those liaison reports as well.
Is anybody interested in that? Or if not, we'll just have to all do our best to pay attention? All right. All right, so next item is a review of the planning commission bylaws, uh, staff.
All right, Chair Heford O'Leary, members of the planning commission. Uh, part, part three, section three of the planning commission bylaws requires the commission to review the bylaws each year, uh, at the February meeting. Staff is recommend- recommending several changes, uh, to section seven B regarding public hearings. The proposed revisions are simply intended to better reflect how the planning commission has actually, has actually, uh, conducted these public hearings in practice. It wa- wasn't meant to be a major change or anything, just to kind of, we, we looked at how they were written, how the commission tended to carry out its hearings and figure, and found that they were, they weren't quite in alignment, uh, with, with how things actually worked. Uh, and additionally, staff is proposing a minor change to clarify the procedures following, uh, the resignation, the resignation of a chairperson. And I'd be happy to, to answer any questions, um, that you may have about, uh, the proposed changes to the bylaws. Otherwise, um, we just need, uh, a motion for approval.
Any questions for staff about these changes? So I just have a question in section B, part five, E. If the applicant's responses to questions from the commission, et cetera, introduce materially new information, interested citizens may make additional comments. So is it only, is it that the new, the testimony from these interested citizens needs to be materially relevant? Or that the applicant between their original comment and the subsequent comments has to have introduced new information?
Uh, Chair Heford O'Leary, that's actually a great question. Um, truthfully, it could be either. Um, I think the intent here was that, you know, at this point of the public hearing, um, time would, five minutes would have been allotted to, to each, uh, member of the public who was interested in speaking. And, um, this, this language was put in to, to just, to encourage, uh, or to promote meeting efficiency. So we're not hearing the same information, um, you know, back to back to back or from, from the same individual with no new information. But if, um, we would certainly welcome a, a slight tweak to that language to, to reflect that i- if either a member of the public or the applicant had introduced, uh, material, materially new information.
Yeah, I think personally I would prefer that, just because it seems possible that some member could have, some, some individual could have produced something that would be new information for others to react to. And I think having, I, I like the cut, the standard of having materially new information, so we aren't getting repeating. But I wouldn't, I prefer not to limit it to only information from the applicant's responses. Um, and I also will say, I, I like getting rid of the thirty-minute question and answer period because I always found that very awkward, uh, coming after the main testimony. Any other comments or questions? Do we have a motion on this item? And since I have an issue, maybe I will, I will make a motion to, uh, make these changes per the staff recommendation with the change under public hearing five E to allow items from the applicant or other members of the public to introduce materially new information. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, any other discussion of this item? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? Motion carries. Um, city planners report, or sorry, liaison reports first. Um, do we have anybody who has been at Community Services Advisory Commission? It's been a couple of months now, so, uh, I would assume that would have been Reese Daniels, city council. We still have our, do we, do we have any updates? Okay. Um, HRA, I, the twenty-seventeen. All right.
I have no report.
Okay. Rachel, school board.
Uh, last week, we celebrated, uh, school board member, uh, recognition week.
Cool. Um, transportation commission, the main thing that's been going on is Lindale Avenue. And I hope you guys have been to the open house or seen some of the materials for that. So they're starting to get, uh, design ideas together and getting public feedback and coming up with some different alternatives. And I think some exciting things, especially in the business district areas, with trying to get on-street parking and really improve the whole length of the corridor. So stay tuned, because that's actually going to go under construction in just over a year from now. So they've got to figure out the design soon. Um, Chamber of Commerce, we don't have any more. Um, any other liaison-type reports? Yes?
Chair Heford O'Leary, I'll just add a couple of things since, um, there weren't reports from some of these meetings. The Community Services Advisory Commission has been reviewing the parks master plan, which I think a number of you have seen, at least in draft form, through the comprehensive plan. Uh, but the Community Services Commission has, uh, essentially signed off on the draft master plan. Um, it includes, um, details on every single park in the community, items that need to be addressed, short-term, long-term. Uh, we've talked about things that the community wants, including a dog park, uh, some other amenities that the community's looking for. This will all be incorporated into the comprehensive plan, but the Community Services Commission now has done a very thorough review and is, um, very pleased with that work. From there, um, with the HRA, the HRA, we had our two thousand seventeen year in review presentation last week. Um, it was a longer presentation than we've done in the past, really highlighting, um, first of all, just how much the volume of work that, um, staff and the HRA have been doing over the last year. That meeting is online, if you'd like to look. Also, the, the PowerPoint presentation. There's a lot of information about our, uh, single-family housing programs. A lot of the programs that are not as visible to the community because they're individual, um, sites, scattered site projects, as opposed to these more, um, these bigger housing projects, like the Chamberlain, the thing, things that get a lot more attention. So, um, also our Kids at Home program, which is an award-women, award-winning, um, shallow rent subsidy program. And our section eight program, which is fabulously administered by our section eight staff here. So it's a good meeting to go back and watch, especially if you're not totally familiar with all of the responsibilities of the HRA.
Thank you. Um, and we'll turn it immediately back to you for the city planner report.
Sure. Uh, so kind of piggybacking on the, uh, comprehensive plan information, we had our final meeting with the comprehensive plan advisory committee a couple of weeks ago. That's really been a fantastic group to work with. Um, kudos to those volunteers who have spent a lot of time reviewing the drafts of all of the various, uh, pieces of the comprehensive plan. Some of those drafts are now available online. We're adding them as they're completed by staff and the consultant. You can start looking at those there. We're also going to be hosting an open house on March fifteenth from four to seven P.M. Uh, same format as we had in the fall. It will be here at city hall, uh, in the atrium space. Staff, consultants, um, staff from all of our departments will be here, talk about, uh, these draft plans, what the land use changes might be, talk about that parks master plan or transportation plans. You know, this comprehensive plan is what guides all of the decisions that, um, policymakers make through processes he- here at the planning commission, at the HRA, and at the city council level. So it's a really important document. Encourage your friends and neighbors to come out and talk to us about that. After the open house, there'll be a comprehensive plan workshop. You, you, the planning commissioner, are invited to that, along with, uh, the, the HRA and the city council and chairs from all the other commissions. Um, myself and our consultant will present an overview. This is the plan that we plan, that we intend to send out for adjacent review. Uh, if you recall, there's a six-month review period where adjacent, uh, government units get to review our plan and comment on it. Our, our, um, intention is to send that out for that review in May and then have the final public hearing, uh, before the planning commission in September or October. So we're looking really good in terms of deadlines. We have to have that plan submitted to the metropolitan council by the end of this year. So, um, we have a little, uh, wiggle room here, looking really good. So you'll be seeing that plan a couple of times. And then also, your next meeting on your agenda is shown as March twenty-sixth. But you will have a work session coming up on March thirteenth to talk about some proposed changes to the sign ordinance. That's going to be at six fifteen P.M., so mark your calendars for that. Lots of stuff going on.
All right, thank you. All right, so do we have a motion to adjourn? Any second? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.